Let me try this.
There you go.
We good? Tell me when we're good, Aaron.
Yep, we're ready.
Great. Will the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021, please come to order? This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting via the Zoom platform. Our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the meeting, you'll be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Aaron and I will serve as co-hosts for this meeting. Please be aware that if that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting hosts when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time if you choose to do so, to be seen by others if you would like. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman, the meeting hosts will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you're muted and your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the legal call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page on the town website, www.cigilford.co.us, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five comments of town agencies will be read for each application. If there are any, there will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. First, those who wish to support the application may come forward. Second, those who oppose the application will then come forward. As this is the public hearing, it must be recorded. It is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak, stating their name and address. Seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the public meeting, during which time the commission will try and reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of the commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at 203-453-8039, or emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us after 9:00 a.m. Ten, all actions taken tonight by the commission will be on a roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seat of this evening are the following members. And I will hold on, I'll kick it back, and I ask you to just wave your hand and identify yourself. Scott Edmund. Richard Wallace.
Evening.
Frank D'Andrea. Sean Cosgrove.
Hello.
And I am Phil Johnson. I believe that's it, right? Looks that way, unless we have anyone waiting. Good. Staff present this evening are George Crawl, our town planner, Aaron Mannix, our zoning enforcement officer, Lisa Piambino, our planning and zoning administrative assistant. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. As the most of the, as all the items tonight have been continued from prior meetings, there is no legal notice. So we will proceed directly to the first item on the agenda, which is Stephen Vergadamo, Care of Bailey Building Company, Inc., 122 Seaside Ave., Map 24, Lot 5, Zone R3, Coastal Site Plan Application for Demolition of Existing House and Construction of New Single Family Home. Is someone here to present on behalf of Stephen Vergadamo?
I am. Good evening, Jim Preddy, Rospolo Engineering, 420 East Main Street, Branford, representing Vergadamo's. The parcel is 122 Seaside Avenue, very close to the end of Seaside Avenue. It's about a 15,400 square foot lot, triangular shape.
There you go.
Sorry. Just myself here, sorry. Is that large enough, Jim?
Sure. I could share it as well if that's easier for you.
We don't have the ability actually to have applicants share, so I apologize. But I'm happy to scale out or whatever you need.
Not a problem. So, as can be seen in the lower left-hand corner, the existing home is right there. The proposed house is the darker structure that's sort of at an angle. Over here is a new two-bedroom home. We have a new two-bedroom septic system going between the house and the street. Prior to the last meeting we were supposed to present, we got a letter from Jamie Sidoric from Connecticut DEP, asking to have us actually flag the tidal wetlands instead of relying on the edge of the ditch that's behind the property, which we have done and added to the plan. So as you can see, it's not a very large fringe, but it is not exactly where the edge of the ditch is. So since that last meeting, we have adjusted the house, slid it north slightly, basically to get out of the 25-foot setback from that new tidal wetland line. We have provided also some depressed grass areas to retain the first inch of water over the roof and driveway areas, as recommended by Kevin McGee. We did get an email late today from your health department saying basically that they were okay with it, location and size. There was, you know, a couple of minor details, but conceptually they had approved it. They just have not gotten time to write formal comments. Typical erosion controls, the existing driveway will serve as the construction entrance. There's a silt fence around the backside of this, basically the whole property, and topsoil stockpile area, just there off the end of the house there. Correct. And that's it. I mean, we comply with the zoning requirements. We're just really here for coastal site plan.
Okay, there are a couple of letters from staff as well as, as well as Ms. Sidoria, Jamie Sidoric, I don't know if that's a male female, but so Sean, you want to tackle the letter from Kevin McGee?
Yeah, sure. It's dated January 20th to zoning commission from McGee Environmental Planner regarding coastal area management review. Stephen Vergadamo, 122 C7, O'Gill, Connecticut, Sister Map, 25 Lot 5. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing house and reconstruct a new residence with a new septic system located adjacent to tidal wetlands. Stormwater from the driveway and roof are designed to discharge to grass basins. The coastal resource policies applicable to, for the property are coastal hazard area, coastal waters, intertidal flats, and tidal wetlands. The site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures. They're designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. The work being conducted would have an impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, due to the close proximity of the work to the tidal wetlands, the erosion control measures shall be backed by orange construction fencing. Number two, the town Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be noted the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any demolition or site construction. Soil and stockpiles should be maintained, should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation and control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement, I'm sure, officer. Number three, the site should be inspected daily to make sure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster.
We also have a letter from Jamie Sidoriak, environmental analyst. Scott, you want to grab that one? Sorry, it's a little long, but.
No problem. Dated December 28, 2020, to Planning and Zoning Commission, RE CT DEP Coastal Site Plan Review for 122 Seaside Avenue. Dear commission members, thank you for referring to the above referenced coastal site plan review received by Department of Energy and Environmental Protections, Land and Water Resource Division, the department, on December 1st, 2020. We reviewed the application materials for its consistency with the standards and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-90 through 22A-112 inclusive. Based on this review, the department offers the following comments for the commission's considerations. Proposal description, the subject property is a private triangular shaped 15,422 square foot lot, which hosts a small one-bedroom cottage and above-ground swimming pool. The site is not a waterfront lot and a butt's land owned by the town of Guilford. There's a tidal ditch and associated wetland vegetation immediately east of and adjacent to the site, which drains into a catch basin through a 15-inch RCP beneath Seaside Avenue. A fence line runs along the property line adjacent to the tidal ditch wetlands. The proposal is to demolish the existing cottage, remove the swimming pool, and construct a new two-bedroom, single-family residence with a deck, porch, and stairway, and garage with deck and porch overhangs. The new residence is proposed to be built with a first floor elevation of 13 feet. The existing septic system is also proposed to be replaced with a new relocated system. Approximately one to three feet of new fill is proposed for the installation of the new septic system. Coastal resources, coastal resources at the site are significant and include coastal flood hazard areas, tidal wetlands, and a tidal ditch. Jacob's Beach, a municipal shoreline recreation area with a parking area, outbuildings, and small personal watercraft storage area, and a sandy beach is located to the east. The proposed new structures lie entirely within FEMA designated special flood hazard area Zone AE, elevation 12. The site lies between special flood area Zone VE, elevation 13, to the west, and Zone VE, elevation 14, to the east. FEMA flood zone lines are not exact and may differ by as much as 15 feet. Flood zones are coastal resources that should be reserved for their intended purpose to allow the free flow of floodwaters across land and protected property inland. The materials provided for review do not include or show tidal wetland delineation at the site or adjacent tidal dish elevations. To protect tidal wetlands immediately adjacent to the site, the applicant should establish a minimum of two-foot setback from any wetlands adjacent to the area where work is to be conducted. Such setback areas should be flagged so as to be readily identifiable by contracted personnel until the authorized work is completed. No equipment or material, including not limited to fill, construction materials, excavated material debris, should be deposited, placed, or stored within the setback area. The delineated setback area should not be used as a staging area or accessway. Water quality, according to the applicant, the site's impervious surface would increase from approximately 14% to 27% as a result of the proposal. The proposal includes downspouts and splash blocks to be installed at all four corners of the structure in order to prevent erosion. Sediment and erosion control measures in the form of silt fencing are proposed between the construction work area, topsoil material stockpile, and existing tidal ditch to the east of the site. As the site is a small lot and the work and material stockpile are proposed in such close proximity to the tidal ditch, at no time should sediment or debris resulting from the proposed work activities be caused or allowed to enter the tidal ditch and coastal waters. To prevent the pollution of the wetlands and coastal waters, adequate sedimentation and erosion controls should be installed prior to the commencement of work activities and should be monitored daily for impairs, gaps, or openings immediately repaired if gaps and openings are found and maintained in optimal operating condition until the project is completed and the site is stabilized. To further protect the wetlands and coastal waters from pollution, we recommend covering the stockpile with plastic, especially prior to anticipated rain and storm events, and adding staked hay bales between the tidal ditch. Upon site stabilization, any and all sediment and erosion controls should be entirely removed and properly disposed of upland and out of tidal wetlands and coastal waters. We hope these comments are helpful to the commission. These comments do not necessarily reflect our other local planning, zoning, or ZPA variance considerations that may apply. For reference and overview on Connecticut's coastal management program is enclosed. Should you have questions on this letter or any other coastal management matter, please contact me. Jamie Sidoriak at ct.gov. Jamie Sidoriak, environmental analyst.
Thank you very much, Scott. Are there, so Aaron, you mentioned that I don't see any attachments from the health department?
That's correct. We have not received any formal, or the commission has not received any formal comments from the health director. As Jim had mentioned, there was an informal email that was sent from the health director to, I believe, the septic installer. And I'm not sure if, Jim, if Sonia reached out directly to you or not before the meeting. But no, I had received correspondence that she would not be able to provide any written comments in time for our meeting tonight.
The builder, Jim Preddy again, the builder did hear from her by phone, and then she followed up with an email at 3:13 today. Said, "I'm so sorry, I could not get comments together during this crazy vaccine time, but if you want to bring this email, please feel free. There are a few adjustments need to be updated, but none that would affect the approval of the plan. The health department will work with you to resolve the minor issues. As far as a conceptual design and location, that can be approved. Thanks, Sonia." Sonia Moreno, Health Department.
So Jim, did Sonia provide any detail as far as what needs to change? I mean, my only concern is that when the commission approves a specific plan, if something needs to change on this, I don't want the commission to take action and then have to have you come return to them for a modification. So I'm just unclear of the scope of what.
Yeah, and I don't really know. She didn't have time for it, but she said they were minor in nature and they wouldn't change the location or the size of the system, so.
I think we're speaking, Jamie. Aaron, are we supposed to have these things 24 hours in advance and put them up on the website for public viewing?
So the executive orders for the virtual meetings, yes, they do ask that information be uploaded to the town website for visibility, a minimum of 24 hours prior. I think that's, you know, I think there is language in there that states to the best of people's abilities, so that really is up to the commission. In a similar fashion, we did receive an email at 4:25 today from Jamie Sidoriak that had said she received the modified plans. Let me see, I have that email. Provided that the commissioners have no other comments or requirements, I'm satisfied with the revised plan showing the wetland delineation. I recommend that the commissioners and applicant continue to consider and apply the wetland setback as set forth in my original letter, which was that two feet. On that note, Jim, I had one question as far as, this is, this has historically been maintained as lawn, those tidal wetlands? Or are you proposing, or is there any sort of restoration planting now that we see where the actual tidal line is? The tidal wetland line? Are you proposing anything of that nature?
To my knowledge, Jim Preddy again, to my knowledge, it's been lawn pretty much right up to that fence. It kind of runs almost the same line as the wetland line. I don't, there hasn't, you know, we just, obviously, we just did this recently, had it flagged. So there wasn't any plans for any sort of restoration, but again, it historically has been lawn up to the fence.
Okay.
If I can, you know, I could speak to a couple of the comments. We do show stockpile with the silt fence enclosure. We are, as Jamie had asked, keeping our silt fence and construction limit line well past her two-foot recommended setback. We can add the orange construction fence that Kevin had asked for. And note that, you know, inspections need to take place with, for the erosion controls before construction starts. I mean, that's all pretty standard kind of stuff. But so far, I mean, any of the comments that come at late in the game are very easily addressed.
Chairman? Yes? Yeah. I have a question for Jim. Where is the septic exactly located now and where will it be if Maren could, we could see that?
Yes.
So the existing septic, sorry, Jim Preddy again, behind the existing house, there's the tank. And, and the leach field was somewhere behind that. We don't exactly know where because we didn't go digging for it everywhere. But during the course of construction, any elements that are encountered will have to be moved and properly disposed of. The new system is out in front of the new house, between the house and the street, actually farther away from the tidal wetlands. And that will be a new mantis, you know, state-of-the-art kind of mantis system. I said, I suppose I should mention that the first floor of the house is set at elevation 13. This is a 12, elevation 12 flood zone, so we are at the foot of freeboard. Kind of common to all the shoreline towns. And the lower level will be built, you know, to FEMA standards with flood ports and, you know, some materials.
Right, that's a garage, drive-in.
It's just a garage and garage and some storage space, yes, correct.
On slab with flood vents.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I want to say that I would personally like to have the comments of the health department provided to us so we can read it for the record.
Okay.
So what I'm going to suggest is that we proceed with public comment. Any questions? And then potentially table this to our next meeting so we can get the official comments from the town staff. So we make sure that we do this correctly. But I, Jim, I assure you that we'll put you first on the agenda and get you through ASAP, assuming that's okay with other commissioners, unless people feel strongly to the contrary. Frank, you want to talk? No?
I'll talk. I'm totally on board with you. I just don't want to go incomplete without these official notifications from the health director.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, my only comment is I just want to be sure that based on the comments, I think it was from Deep, that plastic is pre-positioned to put over debris material prior to any weather event that might occur during construction.
Jim Preddy again, if we are going to continue this, the couple of comments that we received from Jamie and Kevin, I will actually address on the plan and reset them in so that it's clean for the record for the next one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I mean, obviously, our goal is to get everything right the first time and not to try and go back and cob things together.
I understand.
And it's, you know, I, not that I, town staff accounts to me, but I'm sorry that these comments were not in place earlier.
Listen, I understand the health departments have some other more pressing issues at the moment, so we're kind of kicked down the list as it is.
Well, let me do this. Let's, let's move quickly into questions and then comments so that way we just have some quick items to continue. Are there any questions from commissioners with respect to this application? I'm just going to do a quick, if it's okay with you, a quick screen share for everyone. Just so, if you've ever driven down to Jacob's Beach, this kind of triangular, this is the lot. If you zoom in, actually, it's very difficult to see the house. It's right here. So the proposed house, as I'm looking at the plan, runs this way, if that's correct.
That's correct.
Yes. Yeah. And if you go to street view, you can see what that house looks like now. I think that's street view. Sorry, not that it matters. You get the idea. It's a triangular lot. It's the last lot before you turn left into Jacob's Beach. So I just thought I would throw that out. So are there any other comments from commissioners?
Just to clarify, just to clarify, Jim, the, the house is going to be an elevated structure.
Yes, that is correct because of the, because we're removing, I mean, the other house is existing, non-conforming in many ways. FEMA being one of them. To build anything new here, we have to meet the new standards. So yes, it'll be elevated more than the other house, for sure.
Let's see.
I think the plan said 13 feet.
The first floor is at elevation 13, the flood zone is 12, so we're holding that foot of freeboard above the elevation 12.
I'm going to, I'm going to do this again, one second.
Sean, it's not on piers. It will, it is a foundation that will be, will function as a garage underneath the first floor.
These are the actual drawings.
Okay, so it's basically the 13 feet is, is the elevated living space.
That's correct.
Yes.
So in this diagram, I think this red line probably represents that. I'm just guessing.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. Would anyone from the public like to ask any questions with respect to this application? Again, the scope of our review has to do with the coastal site plan. And so I would ask that you, if you have any questions, that you limit them to the coastal site plan application. Martha, do you have any questions? Let's unmute you and then you can ask a question with respect to the coastal site plan.
Yes, my name is Martha Woodruff. I live at 121 Seaside, directly across the street from the proposed plan. Just a comment, when some of the neighbors were told originally that the stakes that were put out were for a septic system. So I have to say, it's hard for me to ask a question because I'm a little surprised. I did call when the neighborhood got the letter regarding the building, and I was told that nothing would happen or be proposed until the neighborhood was informed. So again, I'm just a little surprised to see what I'm seeing here. So my question is, how large is the house? And there, I believe, is an affirmation that all of the setbacks for the wetlands have been met. So that is in the form of a question.
So what I would do is, I'll kick it back to Aaron. Aaron, does the house meet the requirements with respect to the zoning code?
Yeah, I think, Jim, you could probably, you have a zoning block on your site plan. Know you, I'm looking.
Yeah, usually we do.
To answer the question for a setback from the critical coastal resource, the tidal wetland is considered the critical coastal resource line. And as, and I can show you on this plan, the closest point to the tidal wetland is 25.2 feet to that line. So they're right on that critical coastal resource setback line. As far as lot coverage, I would, I would defer to Jim here for that.
Yeah. Jim Preddy, once the other house comes down, we comply. I mean, the footprint is only about 20, 100 square feet, so. I might calculator, we. Yeah, we're only about thirteen percent coverage once another house comes up.
So.
I'm sorry.
And all the, all the others.
I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't understand what you said.
Uh, the lot coverage by the building, the building's only about twenty one hundred square feet of footprint. So the lot coverage is only just over thirteen percent of the.
How large, how, how large is the house square footage?
Twenty one hundred.
The total square footage?
Oh, no, the total square footage is a little larger because there is another floor. Uh, I have somewhere here. There is there is a partial second floor. Doesn't go over the garage, so it's, I'll say it's about another maybe thirteen hundred square feet, I think, on the second floor.
Again, Martha, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but the, the scope of the planning and zoning commission's authority on this is really with respect to the coastal setback. So it, it, it's not, you know, as long as it checks all the boxes with respect to height setbacks, et cetera. But that's really not within our review.
Uh, the, the designer, excuse me, Phil, is indicating three thousand four hundred and sixty four square feet for the house.
Okay. And that it meets all the regulations with respect to the zoning code?
So for setbacks, yes, building height is compliant as well, based off of the flood elevations.
Okay.
And as opposed to existing average grade, you get extra in a flood zone, but yes. And lot coverage, as Jim had indicated, the allowed lot coverage in an R three zone is twenty percent. And as he's looking at this, the footprint of the building is what would count towards lot coverage. And Jim is estimating thirteen percent for that.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Martha?
Um, not exactly, but I'll put it in writing and I, my understanding is that this is going to go on to the next meeting. If there are further comments.
That, that is my hope, and I believe that will be the case.
I mean, I thought that's what I heard earlier from Sean.
I, I believe that we will be continuing this to the next meeting because we don't have comments from the health department.
Okay, okay.
If you have specific questions in writing, Martha, you can provide those to the planning and zoning commission and they can be read into the record at the next meeting. Or if you need clarification tonight, you can, you can ask your question.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to ask a question with respect to this application? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Obviously, if your video is not on, I, I cannot tell whether or not you're raising your hand. So either turn your video on or turn your audio on and it has to be recognized. Would anyone like to speak against this application? With no comments of for or against, would some, would the commissioner like to make a motion? Do we need to do anything else here?
I have a, a letter from the town historian. Bill that he had asked to, to share on the record, this came prior to the last.
You want to grab that one from Joel?
You saying?
DeAndrea.
Oh, Frank. Yep. Okay, um, this is from Joel Helander from Wednesday, January sixth, twenty twenty, sent to the planning and zoning commission. I regret that I cannot readily locate Chairman Phil Johnson's email address, but trust that this can be shared with him and other commissioners. This morning, I received notice of tonight's P and Z meeting with proposals to demolish the existing dwelling house at one twenty two Seaside Avenue. Although this structure does not appear on the nineteen eighty one, twenty fifteen historic resources inventory, which is the basis or trigger for the delay of demolition ordinance. I would suggest that P and Z not take any quick action on the application. The house at one twenty two Seaside Avenue is indeed considered historic and can be authenticated to Ruben Hill with the year of construction as eighteen thirty eight. The town's field card date of quote nineteen hundred, end quote, is incorrect, as many of the field card dates can be. Houses of this simple style or type vernacular were built as simple timber frame abodes for many Gulf residence who carved out livelihoods from farming or fishing. The very houses that have been lost to teardowns at an alarming rate, especially on Seaside Avenue and Lower Whitfield Street, respectfully submitted Joe Helander, town historian, Guilford.
Thank you. Anything else we need to do on this one, Aaron, or can I ask for someone to make a motion to table this?
Be a continuing, Phil, so that you can still receive information.
Right, so would someone like to make a motion?
Chairman, let me ask you, and we're tabling it really just to get the comments, official comments from our health director?
Yes.
Okay, I make the most.
So we'd like to make a motion, thanks, that's to the February third meeting and we'll put you first on our agenda for that date. Someone have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
And I will also vote to continue this to the third. We'll see you then. Hopefully, we can take care of this quick for you, Jim. Thank you for your patience and understanding.
Thank you, folks, for your time.
Okay. Next item is Guilford Realty Partners, three, five, one Whitfield Street, map twenty eight lot twelve zone. I one site plan application and coastal site plan to allow two temporary office trailers for four catalyzer in the existing parking lot is someone here to present on behalf of four catalyzer.
Now, I have spoken with, I was under the impression that Scott Akers would be here to represent the applicant. This is a coastal site plan. This is a coastal site plan for the location of two temporary office trailers on the property.
And this is Scott Akers, I'm here.
Oh, Scott, thank you.
I'm on the whole call, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. Thank you. I'll share the screen of the location, Scott, and you can explain to the commission what you're proposing.
My name is Scott Akers, representing for catalyzer for three fifty one Whitfield Street. We're proposing for two temporary office trailers. One on the north side of the parking lot, pictured on to your left there in a little bit. The other ones, the one to the north, that one right there. Right, correct. And then also further to your right.
So this is just to, this is such a
Yes, old.
Site plan, this is Whitfield Street and you come down their parking lot, the driveway and the large parking lot in the, the one existing trailer is currently here in, in the parking lot. And I believe you might have dropped this second trailer now as well.
Correct.
So this would be in that area that goes off to the rear parking alongside the building here.
That's, that's correct, Aaron. I apologize for the, for the bad plan.
And Scott, how, how long are you looking to have these trailers on site?
For probably no longer than six months.
Okay.
We have a couple of letters.
The commission have any questions, yeah?
Let's see if we can toss these letters in. Hey, Richard, do you want to grab the letter from Kevin McGee?
Certainly, sir. To the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, RE coastal site plan. Coastal area management review Guilford Realty Partners, three fifty one Whitfield Street. Guilford, Connecticut, oh, six, four, three, seven, assessor, map twenty eight lot twelve. The applicant is looking to install a construction trailer on an existing paved parking lot. The proposed work is located in a FEMA AE elevation twelve flood zone. The coastal power resource policy is applicable for the property. Our development developed shorefront coastal hazard area tidal wetlands and inland wetlands. Since the trailer is being placed on an existing paved parking lot and the trailer could be removed during a large coastal flooding event, the work being conducted should not have an impact on the adjacent coastal resources.
Aaron, I have a quick question. Are there any regulations with respect to dropping trailers in flood zones? I mean, is there like anchoring requirement?
The uh, building code as far as any electrical, things like that.
Pretty anchoring requirement or? I mean, you kind of think it's, if you had a big flood come through it, it's going to start moving.
Yeah, that would be covered under the building code. I'm not, I, I don't believe there is any elevation or anchoring requirement. But I can, I, I, of course, refer that to our building official.
Okay. Well, I guess the
Is it my?
Yes, Richard.
It's my, my understanding and from my drive by earlier this week, that there is already one trailer there on the north side.
I think, I think they just stated that they're both there now.
Yes, one, Scott can, Akers can speak to that. I know one is there in the existing parking lot and the power is connected to one of the car charging stations.
Yes, both, both trailers are on site.
And how, i- is there run power to the second trailer?
Yes, there is, Aaron.
Did you have to do a, a temporary service or is that tied into the building?
It, it's tied into the building.
Okay, so that would be something that the building official could confirm if she needs any permits for that. If I assume if it's just plugged in, it likely does not.
I'm just to clarify, trailers have been put in place before an approval by the planning and zoning commission?
Temporary office trailers? Is that, that was your question, Sean?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious. I mean, is, is the approval we're making for the extension of a temporary?
This is the first we're hearing of this.
No, this is the first time they're seeking approval of a temporary office trailer. And I think Scott can speak to this, but is this as part of reconfiguring office spaces in, in?
Yes, due, due. Yes, Aaron, due to the COVID situation with our office size and space requirements for people for spacing. We needed an additional space to reconfigure what we have now.
Okay, does that answer your question, Sean?
Uh, the part of my question was that they, they put the trailers in place prior to approval, but that, that was my only.
This is active fact.
That is correct.
Which I, I find. I just don't find that, you know, approval, just, you know, you don't, you, you, if you're going to planning and zoning commission to get approval, don't do it beforehand and ask for approval.
I understand. I, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm doing what I'm told to do.
I, I feel the same way as you, Sean. I kind of think that things should be done the, the right way. But right now we're looking at the application. And I don't think there, there are more egregious things that I've seen done. But nonetheless, Scott, if you can convey to the powers that be that tell you to do these things, that, you know, if you have the resources to do it correctly, we would really appreciate that it be done.
I, I understand, Philip, like I said, you know, do it with the, you know, the situation with COVID. It was a necessity that was needed and I understand. You know, I apologize for the company for the wrongdoings.
Are there any other questions from commissioners with respect to the site plan? And coastal site plan application for the two trailers? Frank, is that a question or are you just adjusting your camera?
I'm fixing something.
Uh, let's see. Is there anyone that would like, from the public, like to ask a question about this? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this? Uh, would anyone like to speak against it? Uh, would someone like to make a motion to close?
Some motion to close?
How about, did public, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment either for or against?
Sorry.
Thank you for the.
You did that? I might have just missed it. I apologize.
We'll make a motion to close.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
I.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
And I will also vote to close. So we'll go straight to the deliberation of public hearings because we continued Stephen Vergadamo. I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Stephen. So we'll go straight to deliberation on Guilford Realty Partners. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. Proposed motion. Voted the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan and coastal plus site plan application for Guilford Realty Partners, three fifty one Whitfield Street, map twenty eight lot twelve to allow temporary office trailers unshown as an application dated ten twenty eight twenty. And as described at a public hearing on January twentieth, twenty twenty one. The application is approved with the following condition, that the trailer be removed on or before September first of twenty twenty one. This application is approved based upon finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Aaron, do you think we should add that? Any conditions imposed by the building official with respect to flood zone concerns be incorporated? Do we need to do that or just you have the authority to do that without our?
No, you, any, any necessary permits would, would be covered under the building code, so I think we're, we're safe there.
Thank you. We have a motion. Would someone like to make a second?
Second.
Second. Good discussion. What do you think? I know what Sean thinks. Scott, how about you?
You're right.
I feel similarly, but unfortunately, we don't have a lot of teeth when it comes to these kinds of things.
Richard? I think we might be seeing another one in a little bit too.
You know, that, that, if, if.
You sound like the cat that swallowed the canary.
Wow. Um, you know, I'm again, you know, I, I know COVID is a great thing that we're all enjoying, but everyone else is also kind of trying to adhere by the rules and not just go first and ask permission later. But I'm, I'm in favor of approving this. With the caveat that if, if they come before us again with an after a fact, that I will be vehemently against it. So let's do this right from now on.
I understand, Christian.
Thank you. Um, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any other comments from commissioners?
Just.
Nope, sorry, Richard?
I'm in favor of it, but yes, again, I'm with you on this after the fact stuff. And we are in extraordinary time, so.
I hear you. Okay, I'll call, I'm going to call the vote then. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
No.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yep.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
I will vote reluctantly, yes. I will vote reluctantly, yes. All right. Thank you very much, Scott. Sorry to give you a hard time. Wasn't your fault, but you can convey the disdain of the planning and zoning commissioner for having to I understand. I appreciate everybody. I relate to the higher above. I appreciate that. Good luck. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, what do we got? We got upcoming application for Amy Goldfarb. Public hearing is tabled at two, three Ocean Co. Five oh six Whitfield Street Coastal Site Plan Permit Application to Allow Outdoor Music. That's three seventeen Garrett Sullivan. What's it? Site Plan Application that we're we're gonna deal with that one tonight?
Yes, Garrett is here.
Let me, let me, let me read that in officially then. Garrett Sullivan, four, three, nine Boston Post Road, map forty-nine lot twenty-five zone T S Site Plan Application to convert retail play cafe into preschool with installation of associated fenced play area. If someone here Garrett, I see that you're there. So I'm trying to unmute you. Asked unmute.
There he is. Can you hear us, Garrett?
Yes, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Tell us what's going on, Garrett.
We are trying to roll with every punch that we're being hit with, trying to open up an indoor play area in the middle of COVID has proved to be more difficult than expected. But here we are. So the latest and greatest plan is we are turning it into a licensed preschool. With that, there's a few different state regs we need to do with the Office of Early Childhood and one is an outdoor play space. I've been doing this for, I don't know, Aaron will probably know better than I do, a month, two months, maybe at this point. Changed the plan around a few times. It's been approved by Design Review Committee and Inland Wetland. And I'm hoping it goes in a nice, solid direction with you folks tonight. The playground is going to be in the back of the building.
Garrett, I'll share your the survey of your property here.
Perfect.
Just in case the commission is unaware, this is the the former mattress of mattress firm across from the health food store on the Boston Post Road. Pretty much a one way through here. This is the existing building area. So as Garrett was explaining, this is you've gone through a couple of iterations of this plan and working with staff to try to get the level of detail I think that we were comfortable with bringing to the commission. You can see in Garrett, you can kind of go through your your process here, but this this was the original plan you proposed showing a location here for your play yard. For the students, I think. How many students are you proposing?
Max sixteen students and the only reason that's the max is because of the amount of bathrooms. So the state requires sixteen children, max sixteen per bathroom. And then another bathroom for staff. So there's two bathrooms there, so.
Okay, so at the recommendation of both town engineer, myself and Design Review Committee, we had suggested to Garrett to that that a safer location so that children were crossing the driveway in proximity to the post road that it might make sense to locate the play area to the rear of the building. We have also been pretty steady in our comments and Garrett will attest to this that staff has been recommending a professionally prepared plan for the property for quite some time, just to ensure a level of detail of the materials that the play yard will consist of as well as proper circulation and safety on the site. And so this this plan has been updated and I can share with you our more recent excuse me, Garrett's more recent drawing here.
And I'd like to just point out that I didn't do this before going to to the commission.
What's that?
Following, following the the last gentleman, I'm going trying to do things the right way with you guys.
Oh, it's not built?
It depends how this meeting goes. I might go down tonight.
Um.
So
Cold.
Just to kind of
Can you, can you rotate that?
I cannot on this drawing. My other computer has an Adobe. This so this is a side coming through the side portion of the driveway. So this is this area back here is the rear of the building. And so essentially Garrett, if you can kind of describe this, you have some utilities in here.
Right.
This is access way.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and give a quick rundown here. So you'll notice right up against the building, there is a seven foot gap which will be fenced in. That's where a couple HVAC unit, HVAC units are, some propane tanks. So what we'll do is just have a six foot vinyl high fence, six foot high vinyl fence, just running down, blocking all that. A, it looks better if the kids aren't staring at that. And of course, you know, safety. The seven feet will give, you know, enough room if we have to have maintenance workers come in there and check on anything.
So you have two exits from the building to access this play yard, one here and then one further to the west here. Is that correct?
Correct. So there's two back doors to this building on either side. So the thought was, you know, it'll be the best for the children to go right from building to playground rather than crossing nineteen, twenty feet into the side playground. So, you know, with that being said, there will be, you know, enough room for the door to open there. It's a fire safety door, two forms of egress. There'll also be an eight foot gate. If you look at the top of the screen, two four footers that will allow, you know, if we need to get any equipment into the playground.
Is this, is this the edge of the fencing or is this rounded?
It's the rounded one. I don't know why. I wish I had a better excuse. I drew the the squared up one first. But I like the the rounded one. I just didn't erase the square. You still have enough room to swing wide because there is about thirty-six square, thirty-six feet for the edge of building to the curb, if you can see in the top of the screen there.
Line is the curb line?
Yes.
And this is a newly paved parking lot. So to explain a little bit, Garrett, of what this play yard will consist of as far as materials, how is it going to be? Built?
Sure.
So you're building on top of the existing parking lot.
Right. It kills me to be doing that. It's freshly paved within probably six months, but it is what it is and we're having to adjust. So with that being said, there's going to be three inches of gravel laid down first with a layer of geotextile fabric, which is that black, you know, weed material that you put in gardens. On top of that will be eight inches of wood chips. And that comes from the state of Connecticut and what's suggested for playgrounds. They're not supposed to be on top of grass or directly on top of dirt like a lot of the playgrounds in town here, but that's what's suggested. So that's what we're going to do. That also provides drainage.
So how will you contain that material at the edge of the play yard? If you're proposing chain link fencing?
Correct. So there's going to be a five foot high chain link fence going around with that vinyl rubberized material on it just for safety. But to keep the wood chips in, there's going to be two railroad ties on top of one another. Six by sixes, so a total of twelve inches. That'll keep everything in the playground rather than, you know, running out through the chain link.
And so, so some of the concern is that this plan lacks a what we would call a detail showing that section of the play yard. Typically, when you have a site development plan, you would have some type of detail for a contractor to follow. I know that Garrett has explained this in his narrative, but it is somewhat unclear on this particular site plan to talk about these exits from the building. Briefly, Garrett, the what what is the change? There aren't any grade elevations indicated on this site plan. So what is you're showing some steps down? So the doorway is lower than the play yard? Is that what you're showing?
Mm hmm. Right. So I mean, if you if you just do the math on number one there with all the layers, obviously the playground is going to be elevated. The back door is flush with the pavement, so there will be a couple steps needed to be get to get into the play yard.
So there's no gate at the top of those steps? Right?
We may, I didn't put one on there. I was debating it to be honest with you. I mean, I would follow whatever is
Are you walking up to the play yard or down from the building?
Up.
Up.
Working up. So my, my, my comment is that you're putting, if I understand you correctly, Garrett, you're putting plastic material on top of an impervious service with surface, which is already the paved area right behind the building. And then you know, you've got you've got this doorway which goes down with steps. I would just think that the drainage would not favor you at all in terms of you know, water going down into the building. I'm just not sure if unless the grade of the of the property flows flows east. I mean, flows west.
What? Right. It it does slightly. Yeah, you know, if you're familiar with the space and familiar with the building, it's right where you're going. You know, if you're going north or east of Route one, there is a little bit of a grade back there, so the water will flow.
Yeah. So it won't, it won't
Wetland, you know, this is a conversation with
With the Wetlands Commission, right? So and I do have a memo from Kevin that I'll read in as well. We can read in as well, Garrett. So so these are roughly six inch steps then to get up because you're talking about a one foot difference in grade. Okay, so to share, this is essentially the the site plan that is being proposed to the commission for the for the approval of the outdoor play yards for the school.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna share a quick Google Earth, okay?
Thank you.
So this is the site. It's right behind exit fifty-nine. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. So you can get a sense for what's here and obviously the entrance and then the play area would go in the back here.
That's right. You're looking to have that as a one way.
It's already, it's currently a one way right now. So we'll remain
Kind as a one way? Okay.
We actually have a couple of memos. So Scott, you want to grab the one from Janice and Sean or Frank? How about you grab the one from Kevin after?
Sure. To planning and zoning commission from Janice Plasniak, town engineer, dated January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, RE Play Cafe Site Plan Application four thirty-nine bus post road. I recommend to the commission that a professional site plan for this site, along with details on construction methods and materials be submitted for this application. My review of the hand sketch provided by the applicant compared to the site plan on file in our offices does not correlate to the driveway with indicated on the hand drawn plan. And in some cases, the driveway aisle may be less than fourteen feet width if the dimensions of the playground are held. Is a fourteen foot paved area sufficient for emergency trucks and delivery trucks to drive around a fenced playground occupied by children? Should bollards or other protective devices be installed? The purpose of a licensed engineer stamp on such a plan is to ensure a safe and compliant plan. I agree that the location of the playground is much better behind the building. I'm just concerned about the sizing of the playground relative to the site circulation requirements and details of construction for the site to ensure safety and proper stormwater management.
Frank, you want to grab Kevin's?
Sure. Can you put it up for me?
Sure.
Thank you. Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, our environmental planner, dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing site plan to include a playground to be installed on the top of the existing pavement on the north side of the building. A wetlands area is located on the abutting property to the east. The Guilford Inland and Wetlands Commission at its January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting approved the regulated activity for an outdoor playground for preschool within the hundred foot upland review area with conditions.
We also have comments from the Design Review Committee, at least a portion of their their minutes, so that the commission is aware of what their discussion was. I can share those as well. Oh, boy.
Wow.
So this is this, this is, these are the notes from the second visit that Garrett had with the committee. And I'm trying to get to some of the points here. You know, the committee understood there would be three inches of gravel, eight inches of wood chips. You know, with a chain link fence and post in the ground and that there would be a need to have some type of perimeter inside the fence to contain the wood chips. And Garrett considered using railroad ties and spacing them out by the post to allow water to drain through. Let's see. The committee, as it's many members are architects, were concerned with ADA accessibility and emergency egress. And I and did recommend that Garrett speak with the building official who is the authority on both. And Garrett, I think you could probably recap your conversation with Kim as to some of these questions.
Sure, I spoke with Kim after I already spoke to the Office of Early Childhood. And it's, it's odd. I had two different answers. The Office of Early Childhood, which who, which are the ones that license preschools and educational institutions said there are no requirements for ADA specifications unless we get a child or staff member that needs some of those requirements met. Kim, the building official, said she had called the ADA and of course, guy got a laundry list of items which, listen, I'd be happy to do if I need to put a ramp up or have a temporary ramp to get in and out of the playground. I'm happy to do that. That's not a problem. But I do need to look into it further and maybe get something in writing from Office of Early Childhood with with what they said as far as requirements. They are the ones licensing the facility. Kim mentioned, you know, the wood chips that wouldn't work with with a wheelchair. Even if go to Jacob's Beach or Melissa Jones Playground, which is fairly new, they're wood chips. So again, So again, there needs to be some more digging in that. But whatever needs to be done, you know, certainly we're not leaving anybody out. If we need to have a ramp in there for somebody to access that, that's simple enough. I own a home care company, so. We can get that taken care of, not a problem. Janice also mentioned the emergency vehicles going around the building and the fourteen foot measurement. Wasn't correct. I can tell you personally, I went out there with a twenty five foot tape measure and measured it. It's fourteen feet at the narrowest spot on the west side of the building. If someone else would like to go measure, that's perfectly fine with me. The drawings are accurate and they're detailed. You know, I did explain what's needed as far as the layering. I didn't, I can draw three lines if that would help somebody understand it. But you know, as far as the, the different layers we need. It's on the site map and it's also on the summary that I attached as well, if there's any questions, but. I'm happy to answer questions and I've listened to everybody, all staff members, done what they've asked. I had to go to the design review committee twice, wetlands once, passed both, got approval. Here I am. We're trying to make this work with Play Cafe and every month that goes by. You know, it's a financial hardship. I'm doing what I can and I'm doing it the right way and I think that should say something. I'm sure I could find a fence company that would put one up and I could throw some wood chips in there and call it a day. And then ask for forgiveness in three months. But that's not who I am. I've done what I've been asked and I think I've done it detailed and done it well. And happy to answer more questions if people have them.
I guess my, my concern has to do with, you know, we're signing off on this as a commission. And, and I appreciate your diligence on this, but you know. It gives us a little more insulation if there's a certified engineered plan as opposed to a hand drawn plan. Speak.
I, I just need to get this through my head and I think Sean can probably agree with me. The hand drawn map that went before me with Guilford Realty. And the fact that they did it three months ahead of time and just did it. I mean, I, I drew a detailed map. I did what I was asked. I covered all the bases as far as measurements, as far as layers, widths, egresses.
I, and I appreciate that and I would say that we're not really making an apples to apples comparison because there's. Are a couple of temporary construction trailers for adults versus an outside play area for, I'm assuming young children. You know, I don't know, you haven't specified an age range, but I'm assuming it's two to four, two to five or something of that nature.
And Garrett, Garrett, I would just add. You know, I feel your pain. I've, I've not tried to. Undertake a project like this, but you, you have to consider the fact that you're on, and I know you have. But you're on a very busy road and you know, it, it's. I think Phil's comments should be taken to heart. We, we have to. You know, normally projects like this do get a, get a, not just a design review, but an engineer's review. And while you're, while you're, it might be fantastic and an engineer might say it's fantastic. It, you protect yourself to the nth degree if you. You know, went the extra mile.
I know everyone's concerned of safety and I, I feel like everyone, you know, if I can speak casually here, is kind of bouncing around and tiptoeing around. You know, whenever something's brought up and I, I seem to come up with a solution. That's agreed upon, it, it gets moved on to something else. You know, the emergency vehicles has never been brought up to me before, except for Janice's email four hours ago. Maybe five at this point. You know, everything they, they say move it from here to there. The drainage is an issue. We solve the drainage with the layers. Wetland approved it. I understand that one hundred percent. Safety is an issue. I understand Route one is right there. The on-ramp is right there. The five foot fence. Meets the state requirements. So I, I mean, as far as a traffic pattern and being on Route one. What we've talked about tonight is, is a moot point. That's just something else that's been added right now to the agenda. I, I don't know what an engineer will do differently, in all honesty.
It'll be certified. It'll be. You say it's drawn to scale and like you said, we can go out and measure, but we're not professional engineers either. I think it's the certification, knowing that we're putting our name behind something that is certified.
And, you know, I hope you appreciate that we're all volunteers doing this. And that we really need to rely on town staff and professionals. And when the town engineer, you know, strongly suggests that a professional plan be submitted on this. You know, we, we give that a lot of weight.
Garrett, we, 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 we do not, as a, as a commission, and I, I do not as myself want to stand in your way. That's not what we're talking about tonight. But when we get documentation from a town official that suggests to us as a professional that. You know, you, you need to do a little bit more. Please do a little bit more and we'll, we'll be happy to stand behind you.
What I might suggest, Garrett, as, because I don't get the sense that this is going to get approved. As it stands right now, is that we continue this potentially to our next meeting unless you want us to proceed forward. I'll, I will kick that back to you and let you, you know, decide how you'd like us to proceed. We, we have a motion before us, or we could have a motion before us, or we could continue this to our next meeting and, and hopefully. Have a little more information that allows us to proceed.
It's just, it's very sad in these times right now that now I have to go spend thousands and thousands of dollars. To get someone to, to stamp something. So everyone feels comfortable with it. When I've gone out and I've done the work and I've done what's been asked of me, it's very sad. Yet we can put tables for restaurants that are suffering on sidewalks within inches of roads and vehicles. And I'm all for that one hundred percent. But it needs to go both ways. When someone else, the meeting, the, the person before me did something three months, whether it's kids or not involved. It did the wrong thing. That's telling me I should go out and put a fence in and dump some wood chips in and ask for forgiveness. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to do it the right way and if people bring up concerns, I'm happy to address them. But just saying, well, because there's no engineer involved. The drawing's there. It, it's from the, the actual town. Measurements on, on the website. I mean, I. I don't know what else to do, except write a check for three thousand dollars, so everyone here feels comfortable.
Garrett, I think.
Were you, were you ever asked in the process that you should get a professional engineered site plan for this type of change? It's been brought up.
This isn't just brought upon you today, right?
Nope.
And you chose not to?
Correct. I said I will, I will do what's asked of me as far as making this adjustment and that adjustment, moving it. Doing the different layers, contacting Office of Early Childhood. So I've, I've done all the answers. I've, I've done what a surveyor or engineer would have done. I went out there and measurement to have, to have the exact measurements. There's, I mean, it's putting in a playground. The fence is high enough, safety wise. It's against the building. You know, we put this off another month. And maybe we won't be here in another month because.
The next meeting is on February third, so it's two weeks.
And so I, I'm supposed to get an engineer to go out and stamp this in two weeks?
If you can. I mean, I, I, again, I'm, I'm, I'm doing my best to try and move this forward as, as best as we can for you. And I, and I'll, I'll leave it to you. Do you want us to try and act on this tonight or do you want us to table this till the next meeting?
Or if it gets acted on tonight and it's a no go, I guess what's the next step?
If you were to come back, Aaron, help me out here. Does the.
Just to back up slightly. I'm, I'm kind of still thinking about your comments of ADA accessibility and. Materials that can be used and whether a ramp is required and it seems that. Based on whatever, I, I was not part of that conversation that you had with the building official and so if. If the building official is recommending particular accommodations as part of that playground. And they're not shown on this plan, that is relevant to whether or not the commission should be approving this plan. Versus, you know, if it needs a ramp, if there needs to be a ramp. Then that could potentially move the locations of the fencing or affect traffic. So that, that should be ironed out before action with the commission. And it doesn't sound like you have answers of that, that, that you receive. Your, your impression was that you received two different answers of what was required on that. So I, I, I for one would like to understand and get an official. Response as far as what is required for accessibility to that playground. That, you know, whether or not the commission will accept those modifications to be on a hand drawn. You know, illustration versus a professionally prepared plan. That, that is up to the commission, but I, I do think that is some information that we're lacking right now to make a decision tonight.
So I'm just going to throw this out. Would someone like to make a motion to continue this to our meeting of February third?
Moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I just think there are too many questions that we have right now and I, I don't want to deny this and set you back even further. So I'll call the vote on a motion to continue. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Oh, yes.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
And I will also vote to continue. I will do my best to work with staff and with you to try and get you what you need and get us what we need. I appreciate disappointing, but we're trying to do our best, so.
Are we all?
I know. Next item is CMI Power Landscape Supply. Two, three, nine, two, Boston Post Road, map seventy eight lot sixteen zone TS two. Site plan application for outdoor display and storage of drainage supplies and landscape materials for retail sales is someone here. On behalf of CMI Power.
No. Not see. Jim Pentonito. So this, yeah, this is a site plan modification for outdoor display and Jim did meet with. The design review committee last week. And they did make recommendations and Jim was agreeable to those. And clearly he forgot to come to tonight.
Well, I appreciate that.
I think it probably would be helpful to have him here. I mean, I can kind of give you. Present on his behalf.
Let, let's put him third on the agenda for February third. Would someone like to make a motion to?
So moves, second.
Call the vote. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Don Cosgrove?
Yes.
DeAndrea?
I.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
I'll also go on our February. We have new applications from Dean Anatra. Two, six, one, four, Boston Post Road, map eighty three lot twenty eight, town TS three, site plan request to convert a portion of a barn, a nine hundred square foot apartment. We will receive and table to two, three, twenty one. The next one, do we need to vote on those individually, Aaron?
All, all of these you can.
Do it once.
Take action on. I think they're all different dates, unfortunately. The two last ones are the same date, but the first.
So we'll see and take action. You okay with that, Scott?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Frank?
Yeah.
Richard Wallace?
Yes.
I also, we will see that on the third. It's gonna be a busy meeting on the third. Brittany Myrle, Merle's? Merle, sorry. My bad. Forty five Clear Lake Road, map ninety five lot twenty three zone R five, special permit for section two seventy three nineteen. For accessory apartment, receive and set public hearing date for two seventeen. Scott, you okay with that?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Frank?
I.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. We'll see that on the seventeenth. The last two are for the third of March, thirty three Vineyard Place LLC. Map two lot thirty six zone R two coastal site plan application to remove existing studio building and replace with decking. Removal of elevator and construct new porch on existing deck framing. The other one is for Peter M. Jackman. Fifty two Vineyard Avenue, map two lot sixteen zone R two coastal site plan application. To construct in-ground swimming pool associated with patio and landscape improvements, driveway modification and relocate septic system. That's a big project. Set both of these, receive and set public hearing for March third. Richard Wallace, you okay?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
I shall also vote for that. See. Aaron, under other business, discuss process and schedule for reviewing of proposed zoning and subdivision code.
Maybe I could introduce that subject, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, thank you.
We are very close to having final draft of the proposed new zoning code. We have a final draft of proposed new subdivision code, which we're reviewing right now with town council. We expect to complete the final draft of the zoning code, including a, a town council review. Within the next couple of weeks and we want to therefore, probably sometime in February. Maybe toward the end of the month, begin to review it with you all. So we want to talk to you and get your feeling. You don't have to make any kind of final decisions about this right now, but we. Want to get your feelings for how you really want to do this, how much time you want to put into it. And what types of meetings do we want to have in order to go over the proposed drafts? Our thought is that we would send all the commission members, the draft documents. Both the subdivision code and the zoning codes have been. In a sidebar, items where we think the commission's attention should be focused are noted in the sidebar. In the proposed texts. So it's not like we have to go over every single word of the zoning code. But we obviously can if you want to. So our thought is we would send that to you, maybe toward the end of February. And initiate a series of meetings to, with our consultant Glenn Chalder. And Aaron and I to discuss your thoughts. I think we are pretty convinced that doing that at a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, like at this hour of the night. Is probably not going to be very efficacious. And therefore, it probably means that we're going to have to either set aside some regular meeting dates for the. Zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission review or set up some additional dates. Or some combination of those two things. We also have the possibility of meeting sometimes during the day. If you, commission members want to do that. So what we're really looking for right now is your feedback on how you would like to proceed with that review.
George, how many, how, how many meetings would you anticipate and of what duration?
That depends on how many questions you have, but yes.
And Glenn kind of estimated as far as chapters, you know, the, that the regulations will be broken down into chapters and. His goal was some, three chapters per meeting. Say you met once a month, that would be roughly three months worth of work. So it's up to the commission to how often you'd like to meet. To, well.
One of the things we have, Mr. Chairman, one of the things we have noticed in doing the staff review is. You know, an hour and an hour and a half is about as much time as you can really tolerate, you know, discussing this subject. Before it begins to get really tedious. And so my suggestion is that the commission meetings. Where we would discuss these things would probably be on that duration, an hour and a half, two hours at the most. Where we would discuss these things would probably be on that duration, an hour and a half, two hours at the most. Per, per session.
My initial inclination is to to add. You know, we meet on the first and third Wednesday of each month, potentially add the next Wednesday. And just limit it to an hour and a half.
I would ask that, I I host other. Board meetings every other Wednesday. Wetlands or ZBA, so what's that?
Could you cancel those? I mean.
I would love to. Really opens things up.
Well, my, my point is, I think, I, if we could agree that I, I think having a dedicated meeting of a limited time. In duration at a specified time that works with you and George.
And just a question, are are these, are these proposed meetings to discuss the new, you know, zoning regs? Are they public or are they just among us and Glenn?
Well, they are, they're, they're right, like a regular planning and zoning commission meeting, they're open to the public. But we're not going to be inviting the public to make any comments. That will come subsequent to your review. Once we've completed your review and made all the edits. Then we would have public hearings with the, with the, with the public. We also talked about the possibility of kind of simultaneously. As we review the project with you. Meeting with some individual members of the public, especially some of those folks who have regular business with us. Such as local, some of the surveyors and engineers that meet with us frequently. We might sort of meet with them separately to get their feedback. Independent of the generalized public, public hearing meetings, but we haven't really resolved that yet.
Well, and so, so George. The kind of stakeholders that had input with Glenn in the early stage of this project.
Right, yes, some of those, we would, we would, we have to limit the number of meetings. Both for our sake and also because of the consultants and the limitations we have on budget. But yes, we'll, you know, we'll have to feel our way around how to do that exactly.
It, it was my understanding, George, that Glenn, after the commission reviewed, was planning on a, a public input meeting. Before the actual public hearing, where he would have a PowerPoint presentation, more of an informational meeting. And then potentially any revisions that would want to be considered and then moving forward to the.
And, you know, think about this, if all of the people in a public meeting that could meet in person. Were over the age of sixty-five, were, were, and we were all vaccinated. We could do a meeting in March or front or April.
It's possible.
Yeah, if we, I, I think that's a little early.
I know, I, I'm being facetious.
And I think, you know, some of what Glenn had, had. Pointed out in our timetable really was, surprised me a little bit that he, you know, was pushed more that adoption would be closer to the fall.
Yeah.
For this, you know, as far as whether or not the commission wants to have public hearings during summertime and. And also any other notify, you know, regional notifications and things like that. But just, you know, at least to get started and and moving forward, Glenn is willing to meet on a Saturday morning, if that works for people, if you'd prefer. You know, depending on work schedules, if, you know, an afternoon time works or a morning. George and I can, you know, make our schedules work for the most part, or other week, weekday evenings as well. I don't know, George, do you have any other weekday evening obligations for meetings?
Not, not those, not on a regular basis.
Aaron, how about if instead of a separate day? For one of the meetings of our planning and zoning, instead of starting at seven-thirty, we started at six. And then there would be a hard stop at seven-thirty to do the business of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
You could do that.
Yeah, that, does that sound reasonable, the commissioners?
I like that.
Yeah, yeah.
It provides us with a hard stop time and then we can continue the business and it's not an extra date.
I, I like that idea.
Now, would, is that something that you would want to do one meeting a month?
Yeah, the second, the second meeting of the month would, we would schedule this portion of it from six to seven-thirty.
Yeah, we can try to do that.
Okay.
We can see how it works, you know.
Great, I mean, obviously, if it's not gonna, if it doesn't work, we will pivot. That's the, the new term, right?
And we'd still be doing this by Zoom.
We have a plan. Did anyone have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did, and they're relatively substantially correct.
Thank you. So I'm assuming you're making a motion to approve.
So moved.
Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
I.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yeah.
Richard Wallace? I will also vote to approve that, with no further business before the commission besides scheduling our longer than usual meetings in the future. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you very much for all your efforts, everyone.
Thanks.
Adios, hasta luego.
Stay safe.
You too, bye.
Bye-bye.